I'd like to call this meeting of the Truckee Meadows Regional Planning Commission to order. Could I get a roll call?
Yes, so, starting with Dan Lazareski.
Present.
Michael Flick.
Present.
Marilyn Kramer.
Present.
Carl Nieberlein.
Present.
Rob Pierce.
Present.
Shelley Reed.
Here.
Carrie Rohrmeyer.
Here.
Alex Velto. Absent.
Manny Becerra for Alex Velto.
Manny Becerra for Alex Velto, sorry.
Howdy.
Hi. We have a quorum.
Thank you. All right, well, our first order of business is to elect a new chair to fill our current vacancy. The chair needs to be from the city of Reno. Does the city of Reno have a nomination?
City of Reno does. This is Commissioner Manny Becerra for the record. I move to nominate Carrie Rohrmeyer for Chair of the Regional Planning Commission and request that they take over the duties of Chair immediately and through the remainder of Reno's term.
All right, I will second that motion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, you have the meeting.
Symbolic passing.
Thank you. All right, well, now we'll begin with a salute to the flag, which is back there. All right, Commissioner Becerra, lead us.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you. We're going to approve the agenda for the Thursday, January 23, 2025 meeting. May I get a second?
I'll second that.
All right, sorry, shall I get a motion?
Okay, I'll motion to approve the agenda for the meeting of Thursday, January 23, 2025.
And I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, closing item number four. We will open this to public comment. This is a chance for anybody wishing to speak to speak on any item in the agenda or under general public comment. Do we have anyone on Zoom?
We have none, but if anyone would like to fill out a comment card for this item or other items, we have some up here and over on that back desk.
Seeing no hands in the audience, we'll go ahead and close public comment and move to approving the minutes. So, the minutes from the December 2, 2024 Regional Planning Commission meeting.
Madam Chair, as Commissioner Becerra, I move to approve said minutes.
I'll second.
Sounds like we have a few seconds. We have a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. All right, business of the day, we're going into public hearings. We're going to begin with the Washoe County Master Plan Amendment for Lockwood. Presentation from staff.
Good evening, Commissioners. Nate Kousha, TMRPA, for the record. As mentioned, this is a conformance review of a Washoe County Master Plan Amendment for the Lockwood case. So, this project is located on a roughly 5.65 acre site located at 10705 Lockwood Drive in the Truckee Canyon east of Sparks. You can see it on our regional form map up there. The parcel lies south of Interstate 80 and directly north and adjacent to the Truckee River. Just a little bit of background on this case. This case was heard by the Washoe County Planning Commission on August 6. It was denied at that meeting, appealed to the Washoe County Board of Commissioners, and at their October 22 meeting, they heard that and overturned the planning commission's denial of it and approved it. That's why we're here today, hearing a conformance review of the item. TMRPA staff's determination is that this master plan amendment does conform with the Truckee Meadows Regional Plan. So, this master plan amendment is proposing to change the master plan land use on the site, which is, again, about 5.65 acres, and that is going from rural on the entire site, that you can see on the left-hand side there, to 3.45 acres of industrial, which is that gray on the map, and 2.2 acres of open space, which is the green on the proposed land use side of the map. This parcel is currently undeveloped, and there is only one parcel directly adjacent to the subject property, and that is the parcel to the north, which has a land use designation of public slash semi-public facilities and contains a railroad line owned by Union Pacific. And the parcel across Canyon Way to the west, you can see that Canyon Way kind of has that bridge going over the river. West side of that road, there is the Lockwood Park, and it has a land use designation of parks and recreation. And then the south and east side, you can see, are abutted by the Truckee River itself. South of the river there is Story County, too, so this is kind of right on the edge of the Washoe County boundary. So, policy RSC9 overhead here, hopefully you are all familiar with at this point, but this is our review criteria for the regional planning commissioners to consider when looking for conformance of a master plan amendment. So, we're going to walk through these. For population growth, the current land use designation allows for the potential of one unit on the site. Going to industrial would obviously take away that one unit potential, however, this, we see this is very de minimis, as it is only one unit, so for population considerations, there's not much considered there. For regional form, the subject property is located outside of the Truckee Meadows Services Area, or TMSA, in the rural area land designation. This is our lowest tier in the priority hierarchy for development and is restricted to very low density development. Generally consists of dispersed residential employment on larger parcels, things such as ranches, agricultural, scattered residences, and certain types of industrial and recreational uses. Not compatible with urban or suburban development really make up that rural area land use designation. In this area specifically, around the amendment's site, it is not uncommon to have industrial land uses within close range of residential land uses. As mentioned, there's dispersed residential throughout the rural area, however, is where a lot of our industrial uses are as well. In the vicinity, both within Washoe County and within Story County, there are industrial uses already there, including directly to the east, which were zoned, directly to the east of the residences there is the, that's the Rainbow Bend community. There's about 500 residences there. To the east of that, there is industrial in Story County. Also, to the north of that industrial, back in Washoe County, across the river, there's industrial there. You can see on our map here directly south of the subject site is industrial uses. So, there's already a variety of industrial in the area, and from a regional perspective, changing this use to an industrial use is compatible with the surrounding area. Moving on to public facilities and services. So, per Northern Nevada Public Health Amendment Site, would need to be served by a commercial septic system and well. Alternatively, there is a satellite service area that Tomwa has to serve some of the industrial, a little bit farther east in Truckee Canyon here, and that is in Washoe County, and they could possibly extend service from there. That would obviously take coordination with Tomwa to do that. However, per the regional plan policy PF4, the water and wastewater infrastructure would not be able to be extended from the Truckee Meadows Service Area itself, so that is restricted. So, it would have to be a well and septic or for water extended from that satellite service area that Tomwa has out there. Additionally, Northern Nevada Public Health has stated that if this is approved, the future development will have to obtain water rights and become a public water system and install either a commercial onsite sewage disposal system or a batch wastewater treatment plant. And of course, all future construction plans and permits associated with this development must be approved by Northern Nevada Public Health. Additionally, we have evaluated this proposal for traffic impacts. We've used the ITE land use codes for four different industrial land uses, because those are, get more specific than our overarching land use of industrial, so we kind of ran four different industrial uses to get an idea of what traffic would look like here. We came out with an estimated maximum of 250 total weekday trips from this proposal, and that is actually based off of the ITE land use of manufacturing. The general light was just kind of what the applicant seems to be seeking would be 246, and the other land uses go down from there. So, again, 250 average daily trips is the maximum that we've calculated. For context, this does represent a nominal increase in traffic, amounts to about 4% of our 6,250 average daily trips, which would trigger that project of regional significance threshold. Additionally, the subject site does lie right off Exit 22 for Lockwood here, off of I-80, and that exit, as well as I-80 in the east Truckee Canyon over here, is slated to be widened, and the exit improved as part of NDOT's I-80 widening expansion, et cetera, and I believe that is going through environmental review currently. Moving on to our natural resources. So, as mentioned, the southern portion of this site does lie right against the Truckee River, and as you can see on the map here, that kind of yellowish-beige color is Development Constraints Area, or DCA. And for this section on the parcel particularly, that's for the FEMA AE floodway, and that is part of our DCA in which development is prohibited. This portion of the parcel is proposed to be changed to the open space master plan land use designation and will not be developed. Due to the fact that runoff from industrial uses is a concern for water quality in the Truckee River could impact that negatively, it's important that we make sure the appropriate mitigation measures are being taken. Submitted materials indicate that runoff from the project will be directed to two retention ponds onsite, which will be designed per the Truckee Meadows Structural Controls, Design, and Low-Impact Development Manual, which is used by, I believe, all of the jurisdictions, at least by Washoe County and the city of Reno. And we have also reached out to NDP at TMRPA, the Bureau of Water Pollution Control there, and they have indicated that these measures will be appropriate for the industrial type uses proposed onsite. Finally, we have regional coordination, so as in all submitted, we make sure that we're talking to all the relevant parties with any proposal. For this case specifically, Story County staff reached out to TMRPA with concerns. These concerns were outlined in your staff report and were also relayed to Washoe County staff through our initial review memorandum that's provided before it goes through the jurisdictional development review process. And additionally, the public comments have been provided to you tonight and are back here for anyone in our audience to take a more careful look at what exactly Story County's concerns were. So, with that, I have a motion on the screen overhead, and I am available for any questions you may have.
I'm sorry, was there a public comment, Nate, that we were going to listen to for this, or was it's?
Yeah, I mean, we could open up a comment, but I think that's up to our chair.
That's a really good point.
Madam Chair. Excuse me. Jessica Prenti, for the record. This microphone is very loud. Public comment usually follows the presentation by staff and any questions of this board before you then had the close of the public hearing. Then you would call for public comment.
Okay, getting the hang of this. So, we'll open it to public comment for specifically on this. Is there any public comment on Zoom?
We have none, but if anyone would like to submit any of that, we'd love that.
Is there anyone in the chambers wishing to speak on this item? Okay, seeing none, we'll close the public comment. Do you, Commissioners, do disclosures on this level?
Typically, we, Jeremy Smith, for the record, typically we do disclosures in the beginning of the item, if warranted, but I think if anyone wants to disclose at any time, they sure can.
Okay.
I didn't read in the staff report what the reasons were for the Washoe County Commissioners to not approve this agenda item, so I'm kind of curious what their reasoning was.
Yeah, again, Nate Kousha, for the record. Their reasonings are based off their findings that they have to make for their master plan considerations and their zoning considerations. So, I believe they were, if I'm remembering correctly, the findings that were stated were consistency with the Washoe County Master Plan, variability in timing of public facilities and services, compatibility, and change in conditions, I believe is the other one. Those were the four broad findings that were stated. I don't really have any more detail than that. That's what happened at the Washoe County Planning Commission meeting.
I was wondering if anybody from the county or town that's commissioned, had any further data on the answer, so your chair, you can answer it.
Sure. Commissioner Lazareski, as staff stated, different Washoe County Planning Commissioners had different reasoning. When it was presented to the Washoe County Planning Commission, staff could not make a recommendation, one way or another, at the county level. I think that, in general, folks felt that it was not a change to the master plan that was consistent with, or it was not a change to the zoning that was consistent with what we saw in the master plan, but obviously, the county commissioners did not agree with that assessment.
And I will just add briefly that those considerations are different than what we hear tonight and what we look at from the regional perspective. So, we have a different set of findings, and from staff's perspective at TMRPA and from the regional level, we think that we meet the findings of the regional plan, but for the Washoe County Plan, that was something that happens at the jurisdictional level, and that decision was made by the Planning Commission, and the Board of County Commissioners made a different decision and approved, and that's why we're here. So, from our perspective, the local review process moved forward and it was approved, and now we're reviewing it from the regional perspective.
Commissioner Becerra, for the record. Hey, Nate, it's always a little sticky when staff doesn't recommend something. From my recollection, it rarely happens, and so it's always hard to try to understand how does the appeal body reconcile something that came from before them. Just for context, do you recall what the county commissioners' position was to reconcile that difference of opinion or recommendation?
I mean, to be honest, the materials for what happened at both bodies is pretty light. I have the minutes to go off of, essentially, and the videos therein, and they just found a different perspective. They thought that it did align with their master plan.
Great, thank you, Nate. Would our legal, by chance, have context to that?
I'm sorry. Jessica Prenti, for the record. Commissioner Becerra, no, I do not have any more context in that regard. Thank you.
Just to summarize from my perspective, I stand by what we did at the Washoe County Planning Commission. I think that we were correct, in my view, in finding it at that level. Not an advisable change, but the county commission has the right to overrule us on that, and I recognize that staff's review of this, relevant to the regional plan and our findings here, makes a lot of sense to me, and I'm happy to make the motion if there's no further I move to find that the Lockwood Amendment to the Washoe County Master Plan in conformance with the Truckee Meadows Regional Plan, based on the findings listed in the staff report.
We have a motion in a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Congratulations. We'll be moving to Item B, presentation on the Truckee Meadows Regional Trails Plan and report by the Trails Coordinator.
My name is Jay Howard. I'm the Regional Trails Program Coordinator for the Truckee Meadows Parks Foundation, and I represent a Regional Trails Working Group of the cities, the county, our regional partners, and the local trails community, wide variety of organizations throughout the Truckee Meadows. So, tonight I have a presentation for you. It's basically on the recently completed Truckee Meadows Regional Trails Plan that we put together as a group. So, if you'll allow me, I'll go through that. It's about a 15-minute presentation, about 14 slides, and again, appreciate the time I wanted to start out with this slide, why trails are important, and you'll notice in this slide, this is information from the Outdoor Recreation Roundtable that was published just this last end of November on the 20th, and it's for the year 2023. It shows nationally how many jobs, the percentage of GDP across the nation, and that number there is pretty startling, the $1.2 trillion in economic output for the country is pretty startling and telling. And if you'll notice, the box to the left, Nevada is down there in the number 10 slot for percentage of state GDP, which is not a bad place for us to hold out of 50 states. And to the right, that column shows how we've improved since 2022. I think, if I remember right, we were in the 13th slot for percentage of state GDP the previous year. So, the program that I represent is called Truckee Meadows Trails, and like I mentioned, it is a regional trails program that we've put together. In this general effort to get all of the groups and the, you know, representatives of city government, county government, and our federal partners, quite a wide variety of organizations and government entities that are part of this working group, 26 in total, to be exact. We came together, I wasn't around then, I started in 2022, but the initiative started in 2017, when some of the federal partners got together with some trail advocates in the region and decided that we needed to come together to be one voice out of many and just to pool our resources so that we could work on improving the trail network here in the Truckee Meadows. So, that was the Truckee Meadows Initiative that you see on the slide, 2017. The forming of the TMT Working Group occurred subsequent to that, which I refer now to as the Regional Trails Group. But again, like I said, local governments, federal and tribal partners, and trail community As time went on, the group completed this foundational document known as the Truckee Meadows Trail Planner Report in 2021. It became the foundation for what later became the program that I described, and it did a lot of things like set mission and goals and objectives, and it conducted public outreach. A lot of the basic information was pulled together, primarily, and most importantly, I think the public outreach was critical at that time to kind of have these workshops, go to the public, and see what they wanted for their trails here in the Truckee Meadows region. That was followed by the hiring of the Regional Trails Coordinator in 2022. The main program sponsor for Truckee Meadows Trails is, like I said, the Parks Foundation. They're the administrative and fiscal sponsor. All of the grant writing, all of the money that is associated with the program goes through them, and they provide a great support for us. Next was collaboration with the National Park Service Rivers Trails Conservation Assistance Program, or RTCA, and together, myself and a representative from National Parks, were the two primary folks that put together the plan. Created a lot of the text and all the formatting and just everything behind the scenes that goes into creating that document, although it was a much larger effort, like I mentioned, with the working group. So, this all led to the need to have an implementation strategy. That's the thing that the Truckee Meadows Trail Planner Report lacked. So, we embarked at that point on this effort to create the Truckee Meadows Regional Trails Plan. This is the process that we went through, TMT Working Group meetings. On the right is the graphic for all the tracks that we followed and the focus groups that we put together. It ended up in, like I said, specialized focus groups, direct collaboration with local parks and recreation departments, regional planning, TMRPA, and RTC, Washoe, and those trail organizations in the Truckee Meadows, such as Biggest Little Trail Steership, the Tahoe Pyramid Trail, and quite a host of others. Input from our federal and tribal partners and a series of review and comment sessions. This is the product. That's the cover page for the document, and you'll see that it's, it's one document, but it's an executive summary that kind of sits almost separately, and then the main plan, that's the table of contents for the main plan, and I'll go through that quickly here in a moment. But you can see that there's an introduction, conceptual trail network. Rules and responsibilities were called out early in the process as being something very important to identify and to outline. The implementation strategy itself, conclusion, and then the appendix. This is the introduction and what it's made of. Again, it's a lot of information pulled directly from the Trails Planner Report, those mission, vision, and goals, that previous slide, the planning process, urgent implementation steps, defining the TMSA, which this board is very familiar with, I'm sure, these influence areas that surround the TMSA. We'll have a map here in a second. And the outer region connections, the trails that come in from outside of our region and are very important to our trail network, in that they tie us to, you know, neighboring regions and, you know, everything outside of the TMSA. Most importantly for this section is the key plan recommendations, which focuses on private sector developments, collaboration on project planning and implementation, planning and design standards, and a park district. There's the map of the TMSA and those influence areas, those adjacent influence areas that I described. This is the first main section of the plan, the conceptual trail network. It is made up of the trail network concepts, which are trail planning areas, trail hubs, and connection corridors. There'll be a map coming up that kind of identifies what that all is. We decided in our focus groups to separate out our trails that were going to be identified in the Regional Trails Plan by what's existing, what's planned, and what's desired. Planned trails are trails that have some kind of work that's been done with them already. They've been vetted, they've been talked about, they've been discussed. They're in some form of planning and on their way. Desire trails are just that, they're desire lines, kind of ideas, just lines on a map, just an idea. How the network data should be used, there'll be a slide on that. It's our development coordination system that we're working on with TMRPA, so that we can have a conversation with developers and developments as they come online and always make sure that trails are included with that. That's a very important aspect of what we want to do with this Regional Trails Program. TMT project support, other things that the program can do for trail maintenance and sustainability, implementation and supportive planned trails that are coming online, advocacy and promotion of desired connections, and the regional trail, or, I'm sorry, the regional loop trail concepts, which is basically a rim trail of sorts that kind of encompasses the Truckee Meadows area and things like that. There's a couple of concepts there. These are some of the maps that we have in the plan. Again, this is a data-driven effort, and as you know, one of the best ways to display data is through a map, so we spent a lot of time putting these maps together, had a lot of help from TMRPA and other partners within the working group. The one on the left is existing resources. That's basically what we have right now in the Truckee Meadows. The blue is pathways, the brown or dark brown are the The blue is pathways, the brown or dark brown are the soft trails. And then on the right are those trail planning areas that I described. The green are the connection areas. We want to, we want to connect these trail planning areas with each other so eventually we can have connection throughout our region with our trail network. And these, this is the map of our planned and desired alignments. The gold is the desired alignments. They are kind of, you know, we went through an exercise with the working group where we gathered all of our ideas for future trails, just things we'd like to see. We pulled information from the crazy-looking desire line map that we got back from the public after we did a couple of public workshops. You might imagine what that, that can be kind of difficult to do. But we did get a lot of great things in terms of ideas from the public. So that's, like I said, the gold. And then the purple are the planned alignments that are defined in the plan. Other reference maps that are in the plan. I'll make sure I'm not going too far over. We broke this region up into map quadrants so that there are maps of just a portion of of the region if we want to kind of, you know, zoom in on something and see it more clearly. Hopefully, that can be done with the map quadrants. We've got a land ownership map, desire lines from the plan and report. We borrowed TMRPA's approved future units map for context, and the RTC Washoe bike ri- bike route map as well. We created a population density map, calculated that population within a mile of a trailhead or some access point. And then, of course, we've got the the map for the conceptual loops and outside connections. This is that development coordination system. That's a term that I coined myself. And it's something that we're working with TMRPA on. And if I'm not mistaken, that's going to be yours to develop in in a collaboration between us.
Well, Jeremy, for the record, it's developed and online as part of the 2024 Regional Plan.
It is online.
Can be refined, for sure.
Yes.
When you know it's available.
So so basically, that system, yeah, fantastic, thanks for that. That system takes our TMT trail database. I forgot to mention, we also maintain a a trail database, all the alignments throughout the region. We did, they be Hardscape or Softscape. We are the one-stop shopping place for trails data for the entire region. So we take that trail database, and it's been correlated, like Jeremy just mentioned, with any upcoming applications for development that come across the desk at TMRPA. And if it's within proximity, different types of notification go out for different distances. But basically, if it's proximal to any one of our existing trails or planned alignment or even a desire line, it triggers a conversation between us and the developer. So again, we can always make sure that trails are incorporated into these development plans. That, again, is a key item that we want to pursue with the Regional Trails Program. So the other two sections of the plan that I mentioned, roles and responsibilities, that outlines the role of the working group, who they are and what they do, and then the program coordinator, myself, what my duties are in all of this. The implementation strategy is a super important part of this program. And defined in the plan, it covers things like a charter, trail networking projects, sustainable funding, not only for the program, to ensure that we can continue on, which is the plan and the idea, but also funding that we can pull together for our partners for their individual trail projects. Adoption and integration, which is something that we're doing. It's kind of why I'm here tonight with you to 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 make sure that there's a level of awareness that the plan exists and that it gets used with the cities, the local governments. We wanted to go through a process to see what that would look like. The City of Reno has adopted the plan formally. We've we've been to both park commissions, Reno and Washoe County, and we're set to go to Sparks. And like I said, the City of Reno has form- has formally adopted the plan, which is exciting. I plan on going in front of the other park, or not park commissions, but planning commissions with the local governments to do probably the same presentation. We want the planning commissions and the local governments, obviously, to be aware of this plan, to use the plan, to adopt it if that's what they see fit to do. But it's a level of acknowledgement that we want, kind of aside from that. Public outreach is something that we're constantly doing with the program. We're monitoring the program for success. We've got annual reports that we put together. And then tools for TMT and partners, those are the planning tools that we can make available to our trail partners to just ensure that proper planning steps are followed and that, you know, trails are put together properly. So near the end here, what this plan does for the Truckee Meadows provides goals and objectives for trail planning at a regional level and pulls that all together, provides key recommendations and guidance to trail planners and developers. That's a key item for us. Gives flexibility for planners to develop the specific projects that they see fit and feasible, that meet connectivity needs. The plan doesn't, it has a number of trail projects in it, but it doesn't prioritize. We don't have a short list of projects. You know, we identify the planned projects, like I mentioned, but those are projects that our community has already put together and are working on. So we want to support that kind of thing and not really be too much of a guidepost, which might end up being a bit restrictive if we try to prioritize or identify projects that 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 should be pursued. So we wanted to leave that flexibility there. We want this document to serve as a reference document for trails in the region. Any one of the landowners or, you know, developers, they can come to us, they can look at the document. They can learn a lot about the, you know, trails planning, trails implementation, and the trails community by looking through this plan. And the plan, well, the the bullet point above that, again, is that key point that I want to stress. We want to promote interaction with the development community and private landowners. Key item for us. So the plan defines and implements the concepts of connectivity access and sustainability in trail design. And with the Regional Trails Group, we are providing a forum for the trails community to come together, like I mentioned before, many voices becoming one. So this is a plan created by the trails community for the trails community, which makes it kind of unique, I think, in that respect. We didn't just pool our dollars and go to a third-party consulting firm and say, hey, create us a trails plan. We we got down into the trenches and we did it ourselves. And we did all the work necessary to make that happen. And I think we have a better product for it. Not anything against anybody else, but but the trails community has just the best understanding of 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 what's involved and what's needed there. So our idea, as mentioned, is to move the plan forward for adoption or support with local governments. I've been finding that, like I mentioned, City of Reno fully adopted the plan. The county wanted to more adopt the plan at the, at the, which they've done, at the park commission level. And I still want to get this plan before the BCC as a as a point of acknowledgement, as an information point, so they know about it. But I think we've got adoption at the park commission level with the county, which is a is probably a win for us. With the City of Sparks, I don't know how that's going to work out. We're going to do this presentation with the Parks Commission and then upon their recommendation, take it to Spark City Council and and see where that goes. So it can be adoption, it can be acknowledgement, support, you know, whatever the councils and and the groups feel is more appropriate. At the end of the day, we want acknowledgement and promotion of the plan and the trails program at a regional and local planning level. So again, that's why I'm here before you tonight, is to make sure you're aware of the fact that we've got a plan. And as you're entertaining applications or discussing development proposals and the like, you know, trails, I hope, will always be something that we'll keep an eye out for to make sure those are 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 part of these developments that are happening all over the region every day. The follow-up document that we want to do is a developer's handbook with design methods and common region-wide trail specifications to become part of the region's planning standards. So it'll be an actual standard that we put together for the construction of trails with our partners. There's the website where the plan can be viewed. If anybody's interested, I can also get you, I can send that plan directly. It's a, it's a large document, we need to make it smaller. We've, we've talked about that. But it can be viewed at the TM Parks Foundation website at Truckee Meadows Trails Initiative. At this point, that's all I have. If we have any questions or comments, or any feelings about what this commission might be willing or able to do to help promote, acknowledge the plan?
Well, thank you. Very impressive. I suppose we should open this to public comment, and then we'll come back to the commission for questions. Do we have anyone in the audience or online looking to provide public comment? All right, thank you. All right, how about from the commission, questions or comments?
I have a question.
Yes, please.
I think trails are very important to the community. I think this is great as part of getting buy-in from the various entities. Is there a plan to link this document to, like, do we have it linked in the TMRPA website? I mean, is that something that we plan to do? And is that something you would want, other than having it at that, at the Parks Foundation website?
Sure, please.
Jeremy, switch to the record. So, yes, we've been working with Jay for a long time. In terms of binding the the plan, we have a TMRPA website. It's part of our natural resources portal data, so you can search for it there. Certainly could be highlighted. It's also part of our natural resource consideration areas policy. So we added two new policies, I'm sure you remember, from all of our work last, last fall or last, you know, last year, that, number one, we ask local jurisdiction master plans and affected entity facility plans to recognize, if appropriate, like the RTC, to recognize that this trails plan exists and to utilize it in their, in their work. So that's, that's one thing. And secondarily, to Jay's point, we're doing a spatial check with every case that comes through the door at TMRPA to see if there are opportunities to start that conversation with the developers, to see, you know, it's not so much just about trails on a development, it's about connecting trails within a development to the existing or planned network so that the whole system works together. So that that is now in place, and we're doing that. And in fact, we have online our NRCA Viewer, which has this tool inside of it that allows local juris planning staff or the public or whoever to go there and and run our analysis right there and find out if for a given parcel, you put your house in there, whatever, how far am I from a proposed trail or something? And and you can see that. So we're going to do every, every case that comes to TMRPA, which is a fraction of the total land use planning cases, will absolutely utilize this tool and look at these relationships. But we're encouraging our partners at the locals to also use that tool online for even small cases to see if those opportunities exist. So we're definitely integrated into, I think, what Jay's trying to accomplish.
Yeah, I actually think that's really important, just for consistency and that so everybody's on the same page, they have the same access. Now, is this a document that is going to be updated regularly? Or it was a huge effort and we're done, and maybe we'll update it in five to 10 years? I'm just curious is how, what the plan is moving forward.
Yeah, again, Jay Howard for the record. Sometimes I definitely feel that way. It's like this huge weight off when the plan got completed. But but yes, it's going to be updated. I I thought that the best way to go about that, instead of having a plan to schedule every five years, you know, redoing the plan, is to do it through annual updates. So I'll have annual reports, which will become part of the plan set. And the current plan set being the, you know, the Trails Plan and Report, the foundation for everything, and then the executive summary in the plan itself. But as each year goes by, we'll have an annual report that kind of updates the plan in terms of what's been done, what trails do we want to add to our list of trails that have been done, to our, to our list of existing resources? That'll be done every year. I I think we'll get down the road, maybe five-plus years. It'll be up to the working group if they decide it's time to fully update the plan. But we will certainly be open to doing that, you know, and take it a step further beyond what we plan on doing with the annual reports.
Thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you. Commissioner Flick, I think, have questions?
Implementation of the plan.
That's primarily through private development. Is there any other sources or any other funding that we use to, from the public side, to develop the plan that you've just created?
Well, so that's, that's one of my taglines when I go before the local governments, is that the plan is done, the plan's completed. It, it's, it's free, it doesn't cost anybody anything. The plan was initially created with funding from the City of Reno. So they, they put quite a bit of, you know, a good chunk of their ARPA funds behind it to start the program and to get things kicked off with the plan. Beyond that, we've been writing grants, recreational trails program funds, supported the effort. E.L. Cordes supported the effort. There's been, I'm probably not thinking of a couple, but there's been four or five different grant sources and foundation sources. And that City of Reno money that has helped us get to this point where we are right now. At this point, you know, like I talked about in in the, in the slide about sustainable funding, you know, we do need to come together as a, as a group. And our representatives for the local governments, not sure what that's going to look like yet, but but to put together sustainable funding for the program, which isn't much. It's a full-time position, it needs to be funded for the trails coordinator. And, you know, that will, that will fund, you know, maintenance of the plan, you know, grant writing for projects, and just working with the, you know, the region's partners to help fund their projects. That's, that's kind of the, that's the strategy at this point. Parks Foundation has been doing a great job. I'm a Parks Foundation employee, so I'm on staff. And so far, I'm just funded through their operational funds to continue the program.
The, the private development sector is is the main funding source for, as the project gets, gets built. How do we get those projects that are already built on on board? Or do we just work around them as far as the trail network is concerned?
Well, the trails community that I keep referring to, these different organizations, these volunteer groups, like the Biggest Little Trail Steership, everybody's out there writing grants and bringing in funds to fund their trail work. So there's, there's quite a bit of that going on. I think from the development community, the, the, ideally, one thing that we would love to see is, as we coordinate with them and and help them with the, the needs that they might have or the desires they might have incorporating trails into their development projects, to see the development fund the cost of these trails to be implemented as part of their developments is a big win for us. And that's kind of in the works right now in the Virginia Range. We're working on that very thing right now with a, a conceptual trails system from basically Hidden Valley all the way down to Geiger Grade through that section of the Damone Hills, the Virginia Range. And we're, we've got some support. We're hopeful that more developers will, will, will do the same. But but I think we've got some that are interested in incorporating our trail concepts into their developments. got some that are interested in incorporating our trail concepts into their developments. So that section of the trail becomes paid for.
Good. Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you. Any other questions? All right. Thank you for your time. This was a wonderful presentation.
Thank you so much for having me. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Jay.
Okay.
Next up, we have a discussion and possible direction to staff to investigate the intersection of regional planning and land use decision-making for data centers. Director Smith, I believe you're giving this presentation.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is Jeremy Smith for the record. I am giving this presentation, and now I have empowered myself with the clicker. Thank you, Nate. So, just a really quick presentation to introduce this concept. In fact, at the behest of our new chair, we added this to our agenda to start the conversation about, is there a role in terms of regional planning and the kind of uptick we're seeing in requests for computer data centers? So we're going to talk a little bit about what are data centers? So most of this is from that source at the bottom that was shared with me. It's from the Urban Land Institute. It's local guidelines for data center development, and there's a link in this PowerPoint if you want to go read that. It's a pretty, pretty quick read and pretty interesting. But basically, data centers are, you know, for context, they're the buildings and the campuses and the server farms, these big groups of, of computers that are making all of, all of this stuff possible that we're doing every day, watching Netflix, online banking, buying stuff on Amazon, right? Really, anything we're doing with computers, which right now seems like everything, has, there's a data center role to play in that whole sphere. It's, it's a crucial part of, of the, you know, worldwide computing. Even, even our military is using that, so. I mean, it's an important thing that we're facing as a society. And it's not going away. This graph came from that white paper as well, and it's showing basically the future need. If you take that square at the right, that's about 2024. And so you can see it kind of going up exponentially in terms of the need for computing in zettabytes. I'm not even sure what a zettabyte is, but it's certainly a lot bigger than a gigabyte. So, lot of data, you know, forecast to be coming through these data centers. And there's a few different types of data centers, you know, you probably are familiar with the Apple data center that's out in the East Truckee Canyon. That would be considered like a corporate data center. That, I think, is really isolated for Apple traffic only. Then there's retail and wholesale data centers where a company like a third-party data center might say, you can, you can rent some of our server space and utilize it for your needs, right? Telecom, obviously, historically, has been big with the communication sector, and all the cell phone companies and the landline companies all have data centers to help process calls. And finally, there's something called hyperscale, which are the big, giant, massive ones that are, you know, scalable as needs change. This is like probably your, your Amazons that are, you know, needing to have, do everything under the sun. So there's just some different types of data center, and what we're seeing is that, as the requests come in, they're all very different. Some are large, some are small, and so there's some variability in, in what folks are asking for. In terms of some considerations around land use, it's sort of a new category. It's, it's not like something that was traditionally part of our land use planning apparatus for many, many years, and now all of a sudden, we're totally dependent on them. Typically, they get lumped in with industrial uses, but also commercial. I took a look at the Wash County Cessar data, the parcel data. There's a building description field in there, and I was able to find that we currently have four parcels that are labeled as computer centers, including the Apple Center. One is up in Incline, one down by Geiger Grade, one in Sparks, I think that was pretty recently added, if I remember correctly, and then the Apple one. But there's been a couple that have come through at the city of Reno that may not be reflected in that data yet. So, they look like warehouses, they're a little bit different, you can disguise them as office buildings, but they're really kind of filling in in that industrial, commercial areas. There are some differences, if you think about typical industrial, though. So one is that you really don't have traffic. You have traffic in the initial phases when you're building it for construction, but then it's just computers and a few people in a room monitoring these computers, doing all the, the stuff. So you're not getting a lot of traffic. They can be a little taller, you know, you can go vertical with the servers, and you might need some vertical height for the cooling apparatus that, you know, is needed, because they generate some heat. So land consumption varies, but typically, there are fairly large land consumptive use, and that then relates to, it's a, it's a bit of a land consumptive use with very few employees. So they may be high-paying jobs, but there's not that many employees that are necessary to monitor these things. Once you get through the construction phase, they're a little different in terms that you might see generators on the outside, electrical substation sort of equipment on the outside of the building to help with the power needs. And that's, they really do have, can have at least, really intense power needs to power all of these servers. And so that really kind of, I think that's one of the nexus points, potentially, with what we're talking about here at Regional all the time, is the concept of sustainability. How do we, how do we do this powering of these data centers that we clearly are using and need in a way that's responsible and sustainable for our community? Similarly, we can think about that in terms of water demand, which can be a big input if, in certain times of cooling technology for these data centers. Not always, but can be. And effluent, that's treated to a high level, can be used sometimes to create that cooling as well. They also, they have a need for security. They're typically monitored 24/7, so that's a slightly different maybe than like a warehouse might be. And then I thought this last point was really interesting, that, you know, computers work by sending bits of information along wires, and so the closer together things are, the faster things work. That reduces latency. And so really, across the nation, what we're seeing is clusters of data centers from different companies, different types of data centers, locating near each other to facilitate that quickness of communication. So there have been some interest, obviously, in our area for these data centers. We have Switch out in Story County, possibly, you know, we're seeing the inception of what we think of as a cluster of data centers in our region. So good that we're trying to get, get ahead of it to some degree. In terms of approaches to how planning might, you know, look at this, and what are some tactics to kind of fold this into our, our planning apparatus that we already have at the local jurisdictions, or even at the regional level? The Urban Land Institute paper indicated kind of four things. One was you can create an overlay district, so you could sort of geographically, spatially designate, and these areas, no matter maybe what the zoning is underneath, we're, we're looking, these are areas we've identified, you know, data centers would be okay, or we want to see them there. You could even take that further, and you could have, say, planned innovation areas. I know the city of Reno has some innovation areas, not necessarily for data centers, but built in as a, as a master plan category. So that concept is another way. You could just, in your master plan, designate areas for data centers, like you would in industrial park, or some other kind of designation. And finally, you could even create a specific zoning district for data centers, which could have very specific guidelines, like you would see for other zoning types, and you could really kind of, I think, control it with, with that approach. That would be a local jurisdiction move. So those are, that's what the ULI paper kind of lays out as some ideas, but you can see it's very much about spatial location, right, and, and how that works together with our existing patterns, our existing infrastructure. We do know that in discussions with staff at Reno, there has been, you know, earlier last year, there was an administrative, basically, setting, a, a paper that the staff did that said, here's how we're going to handle data centers in the interim, because we don't have any policies or any codes in our, in our title eighteen right now to address them. So here's our administrative stance right now. But then over that year, my understanding is there was a series of meetings, and in fact, a data center-specific set of rules got incorporated into Reno's development code. But then what I've heard from leadership, both at the Planning Commission level and at the City Council level from Reno, is that there's still concerns about data centers, these requests, and that more research is needed, and that's really why we're here today, trying to see if there's a, a role for Regional to play in that conversation as well. And I really need to do a little more research and talk with the staff at the other jurisdictions to find out how data centers are handled at Washoe County and in Sparks. So that's something that we're looking forward to doing. So with that in mind, thinking about what can regional planning do in terms of data centers, right off the bat, we can start tracking this use type in, in our data, which, you know, we track all kinds of data as part of our work to understand development, understand regional form, and to forecast future population and employment growth in the region spatially. So that's already something we're doing, and it would be really fairly easy to add this specific type into, you know, just building the understanding of this type. So we can have that, and then that would create a paradigm where we possibly could report out on it at a future date, too. Other avenues to explore, which have come up, would be a regional plan policy. If we find through further research that, you know, this arises to the level that there needs to be some regional oversight in terms of how local jurisdictions handle data centers, we might suggest some policy changes in the regional plan that would then trickle down to the master plans and facility plans, and potentially give some guidance, or ask them to include approaches to deal with data centers in their master plans. So that could be an approach. Further, we have our project of regional significance resolution. If we were to find that there was a significant impact on natural resources, public infrastructure as described by state law that regional planning is involved in, or regional form, then potentially there's a, there's an avenue there to pursue down the guidelines that this body, the RPC, actually manages and votes to change periodically. So that's something that, that could come up. But there is sort of this interesting provision in state law, which is that white box at the bottom there, talking about definitions of what's an affected entity. So how are different entities affected by what regional planning does? We have the three local jurisdictions, we have affected entities like the RTC, but what it specifically says is that state agencies are exempted, as are any public utilities that are regulated by the Public Utilities Commission of Nevada. So those are just things to keep in mind, that our lane is limited. We do have a role to play in terms of transmission lines and identifying transmission corridors in our regional plan, and doing a project of regional significance when those transmission corridors are 65 kilovolts or greater, or if we have power generation or substations in, in excess of five megawatts, or five megawatts and higher. So we do have a, a link into the electricity and energy scene, but there are these caveats to think about, just to kind of put that out there. So really, I think, at this point, that's kind of where we're at. Just a quick overview, and I was hoping that maybe we could hear from the commissioners, you know, kind of your perspectives. We do have a motion that we can get to in terms of how to move forward, but I think that'll be colored by any discussion that we hear now. So with that, I'm happy to stop talking.
Well, thank you. That was excellent for that demonstration and information. We'll open it up to public comment. I'm assuming that's...
We have none.
We do.
Okay. We will open it to public comment, seeing none in the audience.
We have none.
And none online. We will then close public comment and open it to commissioner questions, comments, and general direction.
Commissioner Bussara for the record. I think this is great. I think anytime we have more information, particularly maybe for staff, if they'd want to chime in on this, but more information is good, so we know how to maybe determine what direction we're going towards as a collective, and if we're even going in that direction that we want to be going into. And since this is a pretty new thing for this region, Northern Nevada, and many data centers are in the pipeline, I think it just makes sense to do some groundwork, and I'm all for it. We've seen plenty of this in Reno, and it's, it's been fun, to say the least.
Thank you.
This is Rob. I've got a couple things.
I, I think it's great that we're going to be looking at this. I really think that if there's anything that we can do at the regional level to help mitigate any issues down the road, I think that, that's a positive thing. It's my understanding that Switch out in Story County has lights on for security that are very bright, and they're on all night long. So that's something I would like the commission to, you guys, to take a look at. Maybe don't put these next to residential areas because of the dark skies code. The water, the power, maybe designated areas, and then maybe look at, out of what's different between them all, what is actually the same? And then base decisions upon that.
Thank you. I believe I saw a hand, yes, Commissioner Flick?
Yes. I think it's an opportunity to finally get ahead of the game. On, I was private. What do we want to see on these? Pick and choose where we want to have it, instead of reacting to somebody with a, with an application, and then have to go through the public hearing process and, and saying, no, we don't want it there, we want it over here. And, you know, they may have already bought the land. So, no, I'm, I'm all for going, going ahead with it.
Thank you. Commissioner Lazarsky?
Commissioner Lazarsky, I'm excited to see what staff comes back with, because I think that there's certainly a lot to the changed land use, and potentially at the regional level, potentially down at the municipalities, and to see kind of where our mandate fits into the review of these. I look forward to it.
Thank you. Any other thoughts, feedback?
Commissioner Bussara, happy to make a motion, but I was also moved by Commissioner Flick's position that I'm happy to pass the baton to him, if you'd like.
I was going to add my two cents, too, if that's okay?
Yeah.
Since I, I think the Reno commissioners have really been championing this effort, because we've been getting an influx of these applications. We've had three in two months, and our understanding is quite a few more coming, and that each of these data centers comes with a, well, there's no one-size-fits-all. Some come with huge water demands, others come with immense power demands, and understanding what that means for communities that are affected by urban heat, what this means to our trade-offs of, you know, limited available industrial land with low employment versus other opportunities, definitely warrants more, more research, and the regional board, I believe the regional planning agency is the perfect location to start not only tracking these, but creating policy that the local governments could really benefit from. So I, I very much appreciate this presentation. Thank you. And to my fellow commissioners, I appreciate the, the direction. So with that, did you want to go with that motion?
Sure, I'm happy to, Madam Chair. Kind of a lengthy one, so let me get ready. I move to direct staff to include data center requests and approvals within the agency's existing land use tracking scheme, and to perform further research to understand the regional benefits and impacts of data centers, and to what degree this land use could trigger regional review or policy application.
This is Rob. I'll second it.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. All right, we will move to reports, starting with Director Smith.
Excellent. Thank you, Madam Chair. Jeremy Smith, the record very little to report. We're off to a good start in the new year. Excited to have the regional plan officially updated for the 2024 version, and our NR Plan and PIT products in action. In fact, we've already asked our local jurisdiction and affected entity partners for refresh of the fiscal and capital improvement data and reporting. So we're already on to the next year, and in the April to May timeframe, we'll be putting that together for a report later in the summer. I just want to also give you guys an update that we are still engaged in a conversation about new school approvals and projects of regional significance. We had a very encouraging meeting where we got all of the groups together. I can't remember if I reported on this to you guys or not yet, but very good consensus on the long-range planning side of things. We're working on a memorandum of understanding with the State Public Charter School Authority to memorialize the two-way sharing of information about planning for schools that we're tracking as part of our public infrastructure work, as well as the applications that they receive and the expansions that are applied for at the, at the state level for those charters. So we're building that information stream. That is happening. We're still in process, trying to understand if there is, you know, if a PRS guideline is warranted, and if so, at what level that threshold would occur. It has been incredibly difficult to get this group of people together, and now that the legislature has basically kicked off, it's even harder. So, but we're not going to stop. I'm setting up individual meetings with the small groups, the different kind of, the school district, the charter school stakeholders, the leadership of this body as well. And we're going to make some progress, you know, getting some information together so that when I finally can get everyone back in the room together, we can be as efficient as possible, understand some of the positions, and hopefully, we can reach that consensus and move on with our lives. We'll bring it back to the April, ideally, the April meeting of the Regional Planning Governing Board, because they're very interested to see where this goes, and, and I think, you know, following that, it will need to come back to this body for deliberation, and if there is to be any sort of project of regional significance guideline, that needs to happen here and get adopted into that resolution. So I'll just keep you posted, as we do our best to get everyone in the room together and make some progress, but we are making progress. So with that, thank you very much. I would just say one more thing. Thank you for the switch in venue. I think it's, you know, we're, we're going to get past any technical hurdles we may have experienced tonight. We'll work on it. experienced tonight, we'll work on it. And it's really nice to, to be in the same building that our offices are in. So thanks for allowing us to make the switch. And that's it. Thank you very much.
Perfect, thank you. And how about a report from Legal? Okay, very good. Any requests from commissioners for future agenda items?
This is Rob. I've got, I've just got one request for staff going forward. We just talked about the Story County approval and all that. And there was a couple of questions about the, the county commissioners and their discussion, what they came to in terms of findings and the planning commission. So going forward, I would just request that maybe in your staff reports, you can put a link in there so that we can click on that and go straight to that information. I think that would help us all in situations like this going forward.
Thank you. Any others? Okay, seeing none? We will revisit public comment. Anybody wishing to speak in the audience or online?
We have none.
Okay, closing public comment. How about written correspondence? And none. So may I get a motion to adjourn?
This is Rob. I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second.
All right, all in favor? Over.
Aye.